I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Zion City Council to order. The clerk, please, call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Here.
Commissioner Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Dutton?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here. Before I call Pastor Craig Mason to say a few words, I'd like to inform everyone that this morning retired Zion Fire and Rescue Captain Ron Levin passed away. Zion Fire and Rescue members that were not on calls assisted with the escort from the Winthrop Harbor ambulance into Cogdon Funeral Home. His family was present and advised that they are planning services for Friday, June 26th, and Saturday, June 27th, tentatively at the time. Captain Levin provided 21 years of service to Zion, retiring in 1996, and over 50 years to the village of Winthrop Harbor, retiring there as chief. As one of Captain Levin's last requests, a full fire department funeral is being planned around the dates listed above. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the entire Levin family. Pastor?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Heavenly Father, we thank you and we just give you glory for this day. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come before you, asking for your wisdom, asking for your guidance, and asking for your peace for this council meeting. And, Father, we pray that every decision, every idea, every thought that is being presented on tonight, Father, let it be done with you in mind, and, Father, let it be done with the residents of Zion in mind. And, Father, we thank you right now for your wisdom, and, Father, we just thank you right now. At the end, let everything be done decently and in order, and we ask for your peace, in Christ's name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Would you please stand and join me in the questions and meetings?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners have any agenda changes? Department head? I would just like to announce that item 8F will be taken in its regular order, but we will not be passing an ordinance, we'll just be discussing it for public information and for any questions that some of the commissioners might have or anybody in the audience may have. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
In a second. Is there further discussion?
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number five is citizens' comments. First on the list is John Jones.
My name is John Jones. I live at 1728 23rd Street. I was bothered by something that I noticed two weeks ago, and that was a company from outside of the city of Zion, in fact, outside the state of Illinois, was set up a tent across the street from City Hall, just diagonal up to 28th and Churden. They were soliciting memberships to shop at a store that was in Kenosha. I am bothered that nobody knew about it, and after I made a complaint, I was told that they didn't know about it, but they appreciated the notification and they would take care of it. The next day, I saw the same thing happen, out of state company in there soliciting our customers, and I probably wouldn't be upset about this if there were no empty storefronts in the city of Zion. We had a very difficult time in Zion doing businesses. I know I've started two businesses in the city of Zion, and I was disappointed with respect to the two phone calls that I made, neither one of them returned, and if either one of them had been returned, I probably wouldn't be standing here. So I just wanted to voice my opinion, I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot in particular, I just don't understand how we as a city can allow something like that to happen. Thank you.
Director Iyerson, do you have any response?
Yeah, after looking into it, they did have other proper documents in order, they had solicitors' permits through the police department, were permitted to set up their stands. The only thing, we made sure that they weren't staying on city property.
Thank you. Next on the first citizen's comment is Lisa Isaacs.
Good evening, Mayor Hill, city council members. I have a couple of things that I'd like to speak about. I'm not going to talk about the $1.6 million budget deficit, I'm not going to talk about another business on Sheridan Road leaving, I'm not going to talk about subsidies and loans to some businesses that are still here, coming out of the city's coffers, I'm not going to talk about, the question came up a couple of weeks ago about lowering our taxes, out of that discussion, we were informed that a group came together and, in response to lowering the property taxes, the community of character group came out of that lovely thought, but that doesn't lower our taxes. I'm not going to discuss the repair of the drinking water pipeline again that's going to cost the taxpayers money. What I'm going to talk about is crosswalks. It's a state law to stop for pedestrians in crosswalks, it's been that way for four There's four crosswalks that I'm particularly interested on Sheridan Road, two on 26th Street, which are visible crosswalks, two on 28th, one is an invisible crosswalk, and one is visible. I have been, myself, one too many close calls in the crosswalk, no one stops. People probably don't realize, even after they took their driver's test years and years ago, the state law states the driver of a vehicle shall stop and yield the right of a way to a pedestrian crossing the roadway within a crosswalk. I've been in a crosswalk and been not even to the other side of the road, and I've had a police car enter the crosswalk. I've seen city vehicles enter the crosswalk, I've seen children cross Sheridan Road at these visible and invisible crosswalks. We need to make the community aware because sooner or later, there's going to be an accident or collision in those crosswalks between a pedestrian or a cyclist and a motor vehicle. Thank you for your time. Oh, these signs, they're $47, $47, that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We've put those out before, and they were destroyed like within an hour.
Do cars hit them or what?
Run them over. Run them over. We had them from 26th Street all the way to 29th Street at one time, and it was probably within two hours they were flattened. We worked it out with the businesses along the area where we gave them the sign because they had had the same concerns, and they would actually put them out on the city's behalf, like at 6:00 in the morning, especially for the rush hours and stuff like that, and they just didn't survive out there.
I don't know that they would be visible on Sheridan Road, and the traffic is much faster on Sheridan Road, but I was coming back from Chicago along Sheridan Road, and in the communities, I believe it's Willmet, Winnetka, some of the communities down there, they have signs pretty much like the sign that Ms. Isaacs had, and the crosswalks are clearly marked, but the signs are probably 50 yards or so in front of the crosswalks, and they say, "If the pedestrian is in a crosswalk, you must stop here." And I don't know, but they're on the side of the road, I don't know, these are two-lane roads rather than four, and like I said, the traffic is much quicker, I'm wondering if we could at least look into that and see how that would work.
There's two issues, because when we had the site, when we had the pavement markings put down between the hotel, and it's all good, that was last summer, you have to have the actual crosswalks have to be changed before they'll even allow you, you have to get authority from IDOT to do it, first of all. Second of all, it has to be a certain type of crosswalk, that's the only one that they will allow signage on. They actually removed all the other signs that the city had put up before, there was ones on 31st Street and 33rd Street that we had signs up there for the crosswalks. When they came to inspect the work that was done at the hotel, they removed the other ones, because you have to have the hash mark type one, they have to be similar to what's out there. So you'd have to do pavement markings on all the crosswalks on Sheridan Road, then they would give you some type of high build, allow you to have some high visibility signage along Sheridan.
I'm not sure I'm following you. Every corner, you have to have a marked crosswalk like this?
What they have from the hotel coming across is, it's called a hash, it's called a hash mark, similar like football field?
Right.
Where you have a certain, they're like 24-inch stop bar, they're not stop bars, but they're hash marks. The other ones that you see throughout town, a lot of them are parallel lines.
Right.
Those, they will not allow the signage on. So you'd have to change those all over, similar to what's across the street at the hotel. You'll see a difference if you're out there.
Are we talking about paint?
Theroplastic.
What about paint?
They probably would not allow paint, because it's just going to wear right off. They want high visibility, high reflective, because you got to worry about nighttime and everything else, too.
Is there a reason that we wouldn't do that? Is that our responsibility, or is that the state's responsibility?
We'd have to get approval from them, but they would have the city bear the cost of what they would do for those markings. We can look into, we also contacted the state about doing a feasibility study to lower speed limit on shared road, at least through the downtown corridor, because, one, it helps your business district, that was one thing, and for safety, because if you go like Libertyville and some other places, it's 25 miles an hour. Antioch's the same way, those are all state roads, and we know 21 is four-lane as well. But then again, that has to go to Schaubert, it's got to go to their office, their traffic engineers have to look at it, and it's just a lengthy process, but that's been looked at as well.
Can we start that process? Because I have heard...
We already have started that process.
Oh, thank you.
That we did.
Item number six is a consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of regular meeting held June 2nd, 2012, at 7:00 PM, and approval would not release closed session minutes in the meeting held on June 2nd, 2015, at 8:25 PM. Bails vouchers 121, 020 through 121, 249, drawn on First Merit Bank, total $959,517.85. And I would respectfully request that your motion to approve the minutes include a correction to the regular meeting underneath the consent agenda, the valid numbers, one of them was incorrect, and the closed session minutes, Mayor Hill was referred to as Commissioner Hill's, those pages will be printed on Friday, so we need to have a motion for correction.
Would we approve the consent agenda with the amended minutes? Is there a motion?
Second.
In a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number seven is consider passing resolutions as follows. 7A is approving and authorizing execution of an economic incentive agreement with Grand Appliance, 3316th Street, per Director Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. We were approached some time ago about Grand Appliance running out of space at their current facility, they needed badly to expand due to their expanding operations all over the place, and their options were to expand in their current facility or to move somewhere else. As, you know, a big challenge for economic development and attracting businesses is we're right on the Wisconsin border, and it's very appealing to businesses right now for many reasons, workers' comp, property taxes, a lot of reasons. So obviously, we wanted to keep a good business here, wanted to work with them to try and figure out how to make sure that happened. They have a significant amount of jobs, and they also have, they're a property tax base and they're a sales tax base as well, that we didn't want to risk losing. So what we negotiated with them, what we worked with them on, is that we have a sales tax and a partial property tax rebate agreement that you have before you, where we would rebate over a period of 10 years, all sales tax that's collected over $50,000 annually, and what that is, that's based on the five-year amount of sales tax that the city has collected. We wanted to make sure that that revenue was still protected and that we weren't losing revenue under this agreement, but any new revenue that's generated as a result of their expansion, that that go back to them as part of the incentive package. That would have a cap of $50,000 or $500,000 over that 10-year term. Beyond that, anything that they, still within the 10-year term, anything over that would be basically a 50-50 split. We wanted to encourage them to hit that growth as fast as possible and expand even more, so if they hit that point in seven years, then everybody benefits going forward. We also said that we would rebate 50% of the city's portion of the property taxes on the expansion as well. You know, their expansion is going to add to their property tax bill, we only have control over the city's portion, which is about 12% to 13% of the tax bill, but we would rebate a portion of those property taxes as well. You have the agreement in front of you, there's a couple of blanks that I wanted to address, just because at the time, we didn't have all of the information that we needed, but the first being that the agreement is with 3316th Street LLC, that is the name of the holding property for Grand Appliance, that keeps the real estate asset or company from the actual business operations. Additionally, on the first page of the agreement, under Section 1, there's a, right in the middle of the page, it says it desires to expand its operations by building a blank square foot expansion. We're inserting 12,000-plus square feet, they're hoping to actually do double that, but they don't want to be, you know, they have to do the drawings and the feasibility study of all of it, but that's their needs, but contractually, you know, 12,000 feet is what they wanted to put in there. And then additionally, I believe, there was one more, on Section 3, Item A2, the schedule for completion of project, it says that it will be completed, made ready for inspection and approval and any required acceptance by the city within 24 months after the effective date of this agreement. The state would still have to close on the property, to acquire the property to the north of them, on which to expand, go through the construction and build that and everything, and with winter coming, you know, by the time they close and everything, they wanted to make sure they had enough time to develop and build and construct the project. So we're recommending that 24 months be placed in that part of the agreement. With all those...
Resolution number?
The resolution number will be based on whatever the next resolution number is. With those additions into the agreement, if you have any questions at this time, otherwise we recommend, staff recommends approval of the agreement.
Is that $50,000 average when they were the headquarters of Grand Appliance? Because the sales cash, all sales, by our understanding, would come through that particular sales office, or is this just the sales in the city of Zion that the $50,000 is based on?
It's the corporate office, which they would still remain. Obviously, if they sell in Wisconsin, they're required to sell, to charge Wisconsin sales tax on that, based on, you know, tax laws and things like that, but...
So all sales in Illinois go through this office?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Well, it's all the outlet sales and then any, what they call, contract sales. So they sell to contractors and things like that, it all gets processed through the Zion branch.
So that aspect of the business hasn't changed any, and we would expect at least $50,000 in sales tax to come into the city?
Correct.
Okay. I also just wondered if any other of the taxing bodies were willing to offer incentives? I mean, if we're going to abate 50% of the property tax for this new construction, which is valuable to us, are there any other taxing bodies that are willing to do that? So maybe we would only have to abate 25%, and the school district would, is that in the school district taxing area?
That is in the, I think that's in Beach Park School District, but it is in the high school.
We got the high school, Park District, and the library. Were any of those taxing bodies willing to abate any of the taxes?
They were interested in discussing it, but unfortunately, the timeframes in that were not, I mean, they needed to look now at expanding their business, and they couldn't wait for months and months to decide that. Legally, they have an option, they have the ability to, but we were able to approach it and make sure that they stayed here, basically on our dime.
I suppose it's not something we want to delay, this ordinance, but I wonder, after the fact, having done this, if we go to those taxing bodies and say, hey, this is what we've done?
That is the plan, because I did approach, I approached the owner of Grand Appliance, and we were trying to put together a package where there would be, what I was going to propose to the other taxing bodies was for the additional property taxes that were going to be generated by this expansion, that 50% of that additional amount be rebated for 10 years, which would have been about $250,000 over that 10 years, and that would reduce the amount of the other rebates and our share of this as well. And he said, you know, ultimately, it's a financial decision for him, but we couldn't get all the taxing bodies to agree to that. However, I would definitely like to approach that after the fact and say...
Yeah, I mean, we certainly don't want to lose...
Right.
...a business.
But another, if that property was vacant, then that Beach Park and the high school would have definitely been affected negatively...
Yeah.
...by the drop in the valuation of that for another vacant building. So there's definitely mutual interest and benefit in working together for these economic incentives.
Okay, thanks for working on this.
And Commissioner McDowell, I think that brings up a great point. I know that Ms. Isaacs made reference to this in her remarks, that giving incentives like this is often distasteful to a lot of people, and they don't understand why we're giving things to businesses that are coming into town or looking to expand, but this is part of the idea of trying to keep the taxes down, Grand Appliance believes, and they were being courted by Pleasant Prairie, and that's another empty building, and it keeps lowering our tax base. So although I do, I understand that this is, can be distasteful, it's something that we're in a, I don't want to say a fight, but it could be considered a fight with the state of Wisconsin on trying to keep businesses here. Their incentives that they've been giving up there have been extraordinary. I remember when Amazon located to Pleasant Prairie, people were asking me, why didn't they come to Zion? And I believe they received $23 million from the state of Wisconsin, and so we're doing whatever we can to try and keep the businesses here and bring in new businesses, and sometimes we have to give these incentives.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. You have a motion in a second? Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 7B is to enter into a membership account or membership slash account agreement business member on behalf of the Zion Police Evidence with Great Lakes Credit Union, per Director Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. All this resolution is asking is authorization to open an account for the city at Great Lakes Credit Union, the police evidence account, which is funds that are acquired through drug seizures, things of that nature that go through the state, a certain portion of that is remitted back to the city once all the cases are cleared and everything for us to use on drug traffic prevention and for certain police purposes. But that, those accounts were at First Merit Bank, and they required, you know, access to a local branch, and we wanted to keep it local, so when they closed on Sheridan Road, we looked at other options and decided that Great Lakes Credit Union would be a good place to put those accounts, so we're requesting council's approval to open those accounts.
Chief, do you have any comments?
No, I think he covered it all there, with the funds before.
So moved.
We have a motion? Second. In a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 8B is consider passing ordinances as follows. The A is establishing the prevailing rate of wages per clerk, Burke Timber.
The state statute requires that the city pass an ordinance establishing the prevailing rate of wages. What this does, it just regulates wages for any public works employees. The rates are determined by the Illinois Department of Labor as of June 2015, and the rate chart is attached as an exhibit to the ordinance.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion, but I sure don't like it.
Well, I don't either, but I don't think we have a choice.
Oh, we don't?
Yeah. It's state law.
Yes, it is.
We have a, do we, did we, we have a motion in... Second. Is that a second? We have a motion in a second, is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll. Just let it be recorded that we don't like this? We each have to speak for ourselves. Some of us don't mind this, so. Anyway, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 8B is authorizing the donation of surplus property per Chief Dumian.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. At the March 17th city council meeting, five new squad cars were declared as surplus property and approved to be sold through the public bid process. At this meeting, Mayor Hill, who was commissioner at the time, suggested that we inquire with other taxing bodies within the city to see if they could benefit from acquiring one of these vehicles through their donation from the city. The city council agreed this should be considered. The Zion Park District has indicated they could benefit from one of these decommissioned surplus squad cars. After inspecting these decommissioned squad cars, the Zion Park District is requesting the donation of the 2010 Ford Crown Victoria, it's a black and white squad car with approximately 120,000 miles on the vehicle. I respectfully request the city council approve the donation of this surplus vehicle to the Zion Park District.
Is there a motion? So moved. Motion?
Second.
In a second. Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 8C is approving and authorizing execution of an amendment to the economic incentive agreement with It's All Good Coffee and Espresso, Inc., 2780 Sheridan Road, per Director Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. At the May 19, 2015 council meeting, council approved or gave consensus for a TIF grant to It's All Good for costs associated with the removal of some tanks and environmental remediation of the site. Attached is the formal agreement that just defines the terms of that grant amount.
Is there a motion?
For approval.
Motion? Second. Second. Further discussion? I just have some comments. I mean, we have several copies of this agreement in our packets, are they all the same, or are they slightly different?
I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the first agreement that you have is the original agreement?
The first part is the ordinance, that...
Yeah, okay.
And then the...
And the second part is the...
The second part is the actual agreement, the economic, the amendment to the contract.
Are we also going to fill in some of the dates that are blank here?
Yes, that'll be part of it, those will be filled in with the original economic incentive agreement dates and document number of the original agreement.
Okay, so we have the original TIF funds that were given, and then we have another one which are the... one which are the additional TIF funds given.
Right.
Okay.
The ordinance just states what was originally, what the original agreement in that were authorizing an additional amount.
Okay.
That's the ordinance, and then the actual amendment to the agreement is attached.
Yeah, I would just like to point out that there is a, one rather significant difference between the original agreement and the amended agreement, and it's Section 2B, no, excuse me, Section 2, 2, 3. The pages aren't numbered, but I believe it's the second to the last page of actual wording on the, and it talks to number 3, it says, "The TIF incentive will be forgivable in an annual amount of $6,681.50 over a period of 10 years from the date of valid and binding certificate of occupancy is issued for the project." And on the original one, it was a five-year clawback, and the TIF board recommended that this be a 10-year clawback, and the owners of It's All Good, in my understanding, have agreed to that. We've had a motion and a second, is further discussion?
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 8D is amending Chapter 94, Article 4, Section 94-358, billing delinquency charges to the Zion Municipal Code per Director Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Basically, we're just trying to clean up a little of the code here. Under Section 94-358, which explains the billing of delinquency charges on the water and sewer bills, there's a paragraph that explains when a penalty will be assessed on the bill due to delinquency or late payment of the bill, and then there's a secondary sentence that basically repeats some of the items that are in the first paragraph as to when it will be assessed. So, we're recommending that the sentence of late fees will be assessed if the full utility bill is not paid by the due date. The customer will receive a two-day grace period be removed from the existing code as how it's assessed is explained in the previous paragraph.
Because the late penalty fee is 5 percent of the bill?
Correct.
And that second sentence just simply restates that?
Right.
Basically, without the 5 percent part.
It says, "Water bills, sewer bills not paid by the due date will receive a late penalty of 5 percent," and then it says, "Late fees will be assessed if it's not paid by the due date."
So, I guess-
It's redundant from the prior sentence.
What's going to be removed is the two-day grace period, but a person has 20 days to pay.
Correct.
So, there's a 20-day grace period, actually.
From the, from when it's due within 20 days, correct.
Is there a motion? So moved. A motion?
Second.
Second. Further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 7E is amending Chapter 56 of Zion Municipal Code pertaining to the liquor control ordinance per Mayor and Liquor Control Commissioner Hill. You have before you a, I believe it's four items that will be amending the liquor control. The first is, in the general application, it said the name and address of the applicant's business, including a current copy of the City of Zion business license issued to said business. What we're doing is we're simply asking for a copy of the business license when they apply for a liquor license. The second is Section 56-53, persons ineligible to be licensed, and it says, "No retail liquor dealer's license shall be issued to a person who is legally indebted to the city for payment of other fees, charges, bills, or taxes which have remained unpaid for more than 60 days." Third is Section 56-58, limitation on number of licenses issued, and the number of licenses, Class A license will be, licenses will be changed from five licenses to four, and what we are doing is taking the license that had been used by the old Rooks Restaurant for a number of years, we're taking that back, and it will, if it would need to be reissued, it would be reissued at a later date. License number C, or excuse me, letter C, is being reduced from four licenses to three, and that is the Kmart license that was available at the time. Class F is being changed from one license to two, and this will, there will be a request at the next liquor committee, and it would be probably our next City Council meeting for the new banquet hall that's going in downtown. What's the address, do you remember?
2655, I believe.
2655 Sheridan Road. They'll be making a request for that second license. S license is being changed from one license to zero, and that was the stadium license that was issued for the fielders. And W license is being reduced from one to zero, and that was the license that was available at It's All Good for wine sales, I believe it was. Wine tasting and sales. The next item is Section 56-95, hours of business generally. The sale of alcoholic liquor shall be permitted by license only during the hours specified below for their representative classes as follows. Class E is being changed from Monday through Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., and that's being changed from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. And that is, there's one license holder on that, and that is Zion Park District and Shepherd's Crook Golf Course. And then Class S, all those hours are being removed, and that is the stadium license for the fielders. Excuse me. Class X is being set from Sunday through Thursday, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., and Friday and Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. And Class X is Fritz's Corner. Is there a motion?
You have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 8F, this is the item that I had expressed earlier that we will be discussing, rather than taking action on an ordinance, just for public information and for information of the commissioners also. You have before you a ordinance authorizing the execution of the Zion Power Station parcel agreement, and I'm going to do my best to explain this in, our assessor, Mr. Wipitz is back there, I'm hopeful that he will help me with this. This is the, an effort to stabilize the, either, we can consider it stabilization of the equalized assess valuation of the properties down at Commonwealth Edison at the end of 25th Street where the decommissioned nuclear power plant is and the nuclear spent fuel rods. And the issue has been that every year, the taxing bodies are aggressively questioning our assessor as to the value on that property, and obviously, we want it higher, and obviously, Exelon wants it lower. And it seems like every year, we go to the Property Tax Appeal Board, and we fight with them there, and the property value is set then by the Property Tax Appeal Board. There's been a interest in stabilizing that process so that we agree, and instead of fighting about it every year, we agree with Exelon on what the value of that property should be. We've had attorneys from, representing the school district and attorneys representing the city that have been in negotiations with Exelon on the value of the parcel down there. And this is the agreement, and basically, what you have before you is an agreement that, and what's happened is that there have been a number of questions raised about this agreement from other taxing bodies. So, we're holding it up, we're not going to approve it tonight, we're going to discuss it, we're going to get a number of members from all the other taxing bodies together so that there can be an explanation from the attorneys and Mr. Wipitz, and give some advice on how we should proceed with this. What you have is an agreement from tax year 2014 through tax year 2019, and the value, this is the equalized assess value, and the equalized assess value is one-third of real value of the property. And the equalized assess value for 2014 is listed at $8,145,046. So, that means that the property's real value would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 24 million, and it decreases in value each year until 2019, when the final amount is So, if you round it out to $5 million, you're talking about the value of the property has gone from 24 million to 15 million in the six years that we're talking about in this agreement. Then on the next page, it says that there is a, there's an agreement that the payment years from 2014 to 2019, the taxes on that property that Exelon would be willing to pay are $1,589,099 in year 2014, and $962,000, $962,510,000 in year 2019. Now, my question that I don't understand about this is, if we're agreeing to an equalized assess value, and the rate changes, and the levy, let me finish, and the levies changed, if we're agreeing to an equalized assess value and the rate and the levy changed, it would be my assumption that then the amount of taxes paid would change. But what we're agreeing to is the amount of taxes paid, and the amount of taxes paid won't change. So, I don't understand why there's any equalized assess value in here at all, and that why don't we just agree to the amount, or why don't we just talk about the amount that they're willing to pay? And when you get to, so, that's one of the issues that I have.
I have others, actually.
Yes, I know, I'm just going to, I'll go in, and everybody can have at it here.
I forgot where I was. Okay, I can jump in with-
Go ahead.
That's certainly one of them, and I know that assessor Wipitz and our lawyers and the school's lawyers have worked tirelessly on this document, but I do have some concerns, not only the assessed value, but it's only on the pad and the security buildings, is that correct?
Okay, let's log over this real quick. There's a couple components to this. First of all, this is a parcel, that's 96 acres, and it has a security building on it that's about 2,000 square feet, and a pad that's about the size of a football field. We put a value of $15 million on a building that's 2,000 square feet. The other part of the buildings are the, where the reactor is, where the security building, or not security, but the maintenance building, the offices, all that stuff, that's on for about $5 million. That stuff is going to depreciate at 20 percent per year. That's why we're going to go down to about $5 million assessed. That $5 million at the end of the agreement is just for the security building and the pad.
Yeah.
So, basically, they're giving us $15 million for a building that's 2,000 square feet, which has no value at all.
But why did we negotiate just for that when it's a 96-acre plot?
Correct.
Well, what about the other acreage?
That has nothing to do with this agreement. We're looking at one parcel, and that's it.
Is the other acreage going to be taxed at the regular rate that you would-
Yes, yes.
Does that have, okay, then I guess-
Okay, that answers the question then, because I thought that we were somehow abating or not taxing on the other acreage.
This agreement is just for the security building, the pad, and the buildings that are being removed.
Okay, so it's conceivable then, lakefront property could be assessed at $30,000 an acre?
The reason it's being assessed at 30, or market value at $30,000 an acre is because the land is a wasteland. It's not worth anything. We're lucky that we're getting $30,000 an acre on this. Who's going to build on the, on the lakefront when there's, there's concrete in the ground, there is 82, or something like that, 82 reactors, or 82 spent fuel rods? The property is really worthless.
Okay, that's my next issue, actually, because you're just, we're just assessing the pad, but that pad is not just a pad of cement that's the size of a football field. That pad is a repository for nuclear waste, and that is not figured into this equation here, and I'm wondering if there is a way-
You're talking about the canisters that are on top of the pad.
Correct.
That is considered personal property. They can come with a helicopter, hook onto those and take those away.
Will they?
Probably not in my lifetime or your lifetime, but that's the way the state looks at it, and that's the way state statute is.
Yeah, well, I, what concerns me about signing this agreement is that, are we going to be, and I don't know the answer to this question, and I don't know if anybody does at this point, are we going to be signing away any leverage that we have to argue or litigate the fact that we have nuclear waste being stored on that pad?
That-
Because if we're going to, if by signing this, we just say, well, that's personal property, and we can't do anything about personal property, that's my concern. That if we sign this-
It's a concern of mine, too, but again, I have to assess real property. That is not real property. Sure, I could throw a million dollars on per canister, but as soon as it went to the border review or PTAB, they would just knock it right back down.
Well, that's something I'd like our lawyers to litigate.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
I think in the meeting that we have, we should be discussing that.
Which is why we can't sign this agreement right now, because I think we have questions that need to be answered about it.
Right, and that's why I was going to originally just pull it from the agenda, but I thought we might as well have some discussion about it here. The other thing that I find interesting is that there are acres and acres and acres and acres and acres down there that do not have concrete underneath them, that are not radioactive. When you go from, I'm not sure where the fence line, I think you could go inside the fence line, from the north fence line, you can go inside south quite a ways, and then you come all the way past where the museum-
You also have a switch yard down there, too.
Right, I understand there's a switch yard, I mean, it's not, it's not lake forest or lake bluff property, but I have to, and again, it's my understanding that the value of the property, real property, is what a willing seller, or willing buyer would pay a willing seller.
Correct.
And it seems to me the difference of opinion is, is a willing buyer going to pay a willing seller anything when there's nuclear spent fuel rods there? Which brings us back to your point, which is, I don't, I don't think we'll ever get real estate taxes from the canisters and the paths, but I think it behooves us to be very, very aggressive in talking to the federal government, and what worries me about this, I think, is that if we would sign this agreement, we have Senator Bush, who's working very, very hard and did get a bill through the Senate, to have us reimbursed by Exelon for having the fuel rods down there, and I don't know if this would, all I can, I can see the people that are supporting Exelon in Springfield looking at the signed agreement and saying, well, wait a minute, you guys have already agreed that this is the value of it, why are you coming to us for more help?
That's my, that's my point, is that if we sign this-
I think we have to be careful.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't know where to go with it, and I guess I got to ask this question, I'm afraid of the answer, and please be as straightforward as you can, if we didn't have this agreement, what do you think the value of that 95 acres would be?
Vacant?
No, as, 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 the same as this agreement is, in the same condition as we're signing this-
I think it would be a lot less, because again, I want to point out that we have a 2,000-square-foot building that has a value of $5,000. a 2,000-square-foot building that has a value of $15 million on it.
Okay, and I'm going to ask you very pointedly, like, how much less? Like, we have a value of 15 million...
Okay, if you have a 2,000-square-foot building, let's just say it's worth $100 a square foot.
On Lake Michigan?
A security building, yes. I would say it would be worth any more than 200,000 to 300,000 dollars, if that...
Just across the border, in what's that subdivision there, right on the lake? I mean, there's little houses, small houses, that are more than a million dollars, if you want to buy one.
But this is a concrete security building that has walls that are probably two to three feet thick. It's not worth anything.
Okay.
I shouldn't even say that.
But it is located in a prime spot.
Let's calm down, yeah.
Okay. Give him a break. And can the public talk on this issue, too?
We're not done yet, this is not a public hearing, we're just talking right now. Go ahead, Larry, what were you saying?
I was, I said that building is probably worth hardly anything. And they're saying that within four or five years, that the power block and all the buildings are going to be gone. That's why I'm depreciating it at 20 percent per year. So by 2019, there should be no buildings down there, except for the pad, security building, and the spent fuel rods in the canisters.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Oh, that's okay.
Probably shouldn't have.
That's okay.
He's used to it.
I'm used to it, yeah.
Director Nabel?
Just out of curiosity, and it's kind of a unprecedented issue that we're in, but I understand that the casts are personal property, but is there value in the site being a licensed nuclear storage site? I'm thinking similar to like landfill and things like that, there's only certain places these things can go, so they have a higher value because of their use, not what's, you know, just like landfill, you don't value it based on the garbage that's in there, we wouldn't value the nuclear storage site based on the casts, but since there's only a few nuclear storage repositories, wouldn't that be pretty valuable to those who...
Well, I agree with you, but we need to find an appraiser that can do an appraisal on something like that.
It obviously is valuable, or else they wouldn't be assessing a concrete building at $15 million.
Exactly.
Right, that's my concern, is if they're willing to agree to that, then there's obviously something else there.
And like you said, this just didn't happen overnight, we've been working on this for two years with Exelon.
And I don't know the answer, what that would come out to, I just...
I don't know either. You know, if it was a vacant perfect land, if it was valued at $200,000 an acre, we're still only coming up with $18.4 million, still less than the agreement that we made.
And I'm sorry, I think you gave your number a minute ago, what's the value on the adjacent land?
I don't know. I don't have that right now.
And...
I'll find it out for you.
Do you want to open, do you want to allow people to ask questions?
Sure.
Ma'am?
Well, actually, I kind of came with a kind of speech tonight, but you know, I wasn't able to speak, but this is kind of related. It's all about direction and use of land and all that, and what I was going to say, if I had the opportunity, I brought these articles, too. Can I ask a question about...
Well, sure.
But, you know, with the new, with the change of the city council, we felt we were going to go in a different direction.
One at a time, please.
Can I speak, or is it... I'll sit down if you want to.
No, 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 I was speaking to the people behind you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can't hear you and other people speaking.
Okay, well, what I was going to say is, is that we had, it was a sense of like we could go in a new direction, and what I liked, was going to start was, the direction that is unlikely is retail for us. Retailers will say that we're too close to Kenosha and Burnie for them to come here. So, but we were energy producers, now we're big-time energy losers, that's what we're all talking about, and use of land, and we got a lot of it, and we got a huge lake over there. What the big thing is right now, and it's going on in Michigan, and if we, if the city and the utilities, if ComEd has ears, they should hear, they're better off to stay, in my opinion, than to run away, because they're doing Swedish BioGas International. Okay, I was, I'm going to just cut it to the chase, I was going to talk how they got off of oil and all that, they're very energy-dependent over there, but they're now up in Flint, Michigan, and they, it's recycling any kind of organic waste you can find, you know, this kind of thing, they're actually recycling sewage up there, and they're kind of thinking that eventually, this will go into automobiles. But we have the same ecosystem, the same climate as Sweden, we can do it, too, we're not going to get the retailers, like, you know, with the other cities around us, and we should stay as energy producers. Now, if you sign this agreement, one of ComEd, or whoever, turns around and uses that 93 acres to produce biogas, it's going to be very valuable, something to think about, but I can give you these articles, is moot for thoughts, sir.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry.
Thank you. What is your name?
Christine Hassan, I'm a resident of Zion.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for her.
Is there further discussion?
Discussion, excuse me, item number nine, discussion and authorization approval. Consider, nine A is consider awarding Phase I and Phase II engineering services to Christopher Burke Engineering for Surface Transportation Grant for 29th Street and Edina Boulevard Street improvements, per Director Colangelo.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city has submitted an application for a Surface Transportation Grant for 29th Street and Edina Boulevard. The project is 29th Street from Sheridan Road to Edina, North on Edina to Shiloh Boulevard. This program distributes federal funding in the form of 70, 30 grants for construction, engineering, and actual construction costs. The estimated amount of the grant to be awarded to the city is approximately $363,434.65, with 30 percent share to come from the city's motor fuel tax and street and bridge funds. Currently, this project is in IDOT's fiscal year 2017. To expedite the project and move up on the schedule to be project-ready, staff is requesting awarding Phase I and Phase II engineering to Christopher Burke Engineering of Rosemont, Illinois, an amount of $20,000 for the project, with the goal of making an IDOT scheduled letting in 2016. Funding for these services will be from the motor fuel tax and street and bridge funds.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9B is consider awarding Phase I and Phase II engineering services to Christopher Burke Engineering for Surface Transportation Grant for 23rd Street improvements, per Director Colangelo.
Thank you again, Your Honor. Again, the city has submitted an application for a Surface Transportation Grant for 23rd Street between Sheridan Road and Edina Boulevard. This program distributes federal funding in the form of 70, 30 grants for construction, engineering, and actual construction costs. The estimated amount of the grant to be awarded for the city is approximately $241,953.25, with 30 percent share to come from the city's motor fuel tax and street and bridge funds. Currently, this project is in IDOT's fiscal year 2017. To expedite the project and move up on the schedule to be project-ready, staff is requesting awarding Phase I and Phase II engineering to Christopher Burke Engineering of Rosemont, Illinois, an amount of $20,000 for the project, with the goal of making an IDOT scheduled letting in 2016. Funding for these services will be from the motor fuel tax and street and bridge funds.
Did you mean to say a grant for 23rd Street? Because you said Edina Boulevard.
It's for 23rd Street between Sheridan Road and Edina Boulevard, that's the limit of the project.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Further discussion?
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9E is consider waiving managers' fidelity bond raffle application requirements, per clerk, per clerk.
Rotary Club of Okeechobee has submitted a raffle application, and they're requesting authorization to conduct the raffle for fundraising purposes. Apparently, they intend to sell raffle chances in the City of Zion. The club has submitted a letter requesting that the manager's fidelity bond be waived, and they have indicated on their application that unanimous vote of the organization's members approved the waiver request, which is required by our municipal vote. The copy of the code section is there in front of you, and I would just request that you consider their request.
Who that we approve their request?
Motion?
Second.
Second. Further discussion?
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Departmental commentary?
I just want to let everyone know that there'll be a lot of construction commencing on Gabriel Avenue, it's already started by the school, there's a parking lot expansion for Shiloh Park School that's going on, and once they're out of our right-of-way, then our project is going to begin right behind them. The roads will be open and passable, the bus routes will not be interrupted either, because that's a pace bus route, but if you do not live on Gabriel Avenue, we encourage you to find an alternate route. I know a lot of people use it because it cuts through the middle of the city, but there's going to be a lot of construction traffic out there.
Anything else? Item 11 is announcements. June 20th is nostalgia days. For those of you, I'm sure everybody's familiar with it, for those of you that are not familiar with it, this is a longstanding tradition in the city that is enjoyed by many, many, many residents of our community, and brings in people from throughout the area, and I encourage you to attend. July 3rd is the city offices are closed for the holiday. July 7th at 7:00 p.m., there's a Zion City Council meeting. July 21st at 6:00 p.m., was it 6:30 or 6?
Should be 6:30.
6:30 p.m., there's a Zion Township Board meeting, followed at 7 o'clock by the Zion City Council meeting. And there is, item 12, there's a need for a closed session to discuss personnel and the review of closed session minutes for release. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Shall we move?
Has a motion and a second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen? Mayor Hill?
Aye.